April 23, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Coleman.
Here.
And Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Here.
Thank you. In keeping with the council's resolution, public statements are received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray next to the speaker's podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you'll be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that behavior that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, hate speech, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards regarding items not listed on today's agenda nor for items not listed on the agenda.
Thank you.
Listed on the agenda.
Next item, please.
Closed session, item 3A, conference with legal counsel, potential litigation, one matter.
Thank you. Adjourned to closed session. Reconvening the special three o'clock meeting at 4:37. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. There's only one item under the special meeting, closed session 3A, and there is no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, the three o'clock special meeting stands adjourned at 4:37.
The 3:30 PM meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular City Council meeting of April 23, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coleman.
Here.
And Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Here.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, public statements are received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statement. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card, place it in the tray next to the podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not on the meeting agenda, you'll be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I'll call for you at the appropriate time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you'll be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, hate speech, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received one speaker card regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Martin Mejia.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mejia, were you here for the 5:15 meeting?
Yes. I was just having a session.
Go ahead.
Mine?
Go ahead. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Yes, good afternoon. My name is Martin Mejia, and I'm a property owner of two properties here in Bakersfield, California, primarily 2104 Haguenos Boulevard, Bakersfield, California. And as a property owner, I'm here to voice my objections to the city's proposed tax increase into the sewer rates. As a taxpayer, as a community member, I understand the need for improvements. I understand the need to bring certain capital improvements, you know, in par, and that, you know, brings up qualities, quality services into the community. I get that, and I understand that our system is old and is to be improved. However, I'm also concerned about the amount of the tax increase for this particular item. $711 per year to a person that is, and probably not me myself, but many on fixed incomes or no income at all, how are they going to make up for this amount? I think the timing of it is just bad, given the economy, high tariffs throughout the nation, companies such as Boeing proposing layoffs of a thousand employees, China sending back airplanes into the Boeings that were purchased and now sent back because they don't want them anymore because of tariffs. The inflation that we are experiencing at this point in time, I think that in totality is just a horrible time to bring those rates into the community. Perhaps we should look at a lower rate. Perhaps we should look at expanding this capital improvement over a larger amount of years and make those increases reasonable to the taxpayers of this community. So I understand our time, but I thank you, and I hope that objection stays in the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mejia. And then just for clarity, Mr. Mejia, there are forms. Are they out there already? There are official forms because if you want to register a formal 218 complaint, you'll need to fill out one of those forms or submit it in writing.
That was my question, but I ran out of time, so I'll wait until the fighting.
All right. Thank you. And now, next speaker, please.
J.C.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is J.C. Yamas. I'm a local business owner. Good evening, mayor and city councils. I oppose the increase of the sewer rate. There's a lot of options. We can look and help our city. You are asking us to do a 300% increase of something that we already have that is being done by the leaders of our community. It's not a luxury, it's not something that's going to expand our city, it's something that we already have. To sign up the petition to cancel for this is very hard, and the way people is approaching it, they have no idea about this. Imagine telling this 80-year-old veteran that can barely walk to go do this, they don't know where to send it, what the partial number is, it's making it very hard for them to sign up for this petition to be canceled. A lot of business owners and families, they barely surviving this crisis right now, and increasing it triple without increasing the amount of pay for our communities is not going to help us, it's going to keep us down. So I thoroughly, one of the solutions will be, we need transparency on how we spend in this bill. We need to bring the Dodge Department to oversee all the transparency, how they spending the money, who they paying all these contracts, how they making this money, if there are any council members or mayors or anybody affiliated with this project, are they going to have any type of interest in gaining these millions and millions of dollars that you guys asking for our community? We need to see and have that transparency and see how they, every penny is spent for this community. And I hope if the same way we vote people to be our council members, the same way they can let people know to vote on ads on TV and let them know how to cancel, how to accept it, or how to propose something different, or give a different alternative for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Madam City Clerk, I understand we only have one public speaker regarding an item listed on this afternoon's agenda. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, Mayor.
Yes, we're going to be making a change. We're going to go into closed session and consider those items first, then we will come out and consider the report, and it'll be after that time that I'll call on that public speaker. So at this point...
Motion to adjourn to closed session.
We are adjourned to closed session.
Mayor Go, can I please read the closed session items?
Yes, please.
Closed session, item 4A, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation on two matters. One, Blasparra at L v. City of Bakersfield, and two, conference with labor negotiator.
Thank you. And we are adjourned to closed session. Reconvening the 3:30 City Council meeting. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. There were or are two items under closed session. We were only able to get to one of them, that's item 4A1, and the city attorney was given direction by unanimous vote. We have begun item 4A2, and that is now going to be continued to the end of the 5:15 meeting. So we, we're going to continue that and return, so we will not adjourn.
Yes, and then also for those of you who are here for the report session, the presentation, and any public comments related to that, that will be continued after the 5:15 meeting. So at this point, we're going to give technology services just a few minutes to switch out in preparation for the 5:15 meeting. Reconvening at 8:14. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, matter. On the closed session matter that was continued, the matter was actually continued again by a 4-3 vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, next item, please.
Reports, item 3A, general plan policy frameworks.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'll turn the time over to Phil Burns.
Mr. Burns.
I will, Mayor, council members. We're here today to discuss the frameworks for the general plan. First, want to acknowledge all of the time that the council has spent with me discussing these items in detail. I really, really wanted to appreciate their time, and this time, I think instead of drawing this out, I'm going to turn this over to Della Costa with Rincon, who's our consultant.
Thank you, Mr. Burns, and thank you, Mayor and council members. I am Della Costa. I'm a senior project manager with Rincon Consultants, assisting the city with the general plan update, and I will try to keep this as brief as possible and maybe skipping over some of the less crucial slides.
That would be very good.
So as you know, it's been a very long road to get here, but we are now beginning to draft the actual general plan policy document. We've identified the issues and opportunities, we've established the community vision, and we have selected the preferred land use scenario. Your esteemed council members have selected the preferred land use scenario that is guiding the policy. So the next step was to consolidate everything that we have heard so far into the strategies and integrate into the updated general plan. The frameworks are guided by a combination of state requirements, input from the community and from you, and the alignment with the vision established at the beginning of the process. As a reminder, the vision is a high-level direction that we are aiming to achieve with this update, and the guiding principles are distilled priorities from the community. And I'm going to skip over reading these, but you can review them on the bakersfield2045.com website if you would like a refresher. The policy frameworks are intended to be a bridge between everything that we've done so far and the development of the actual draft general plan. So they are not comprehensive of every policy that may end up in the general plan elements, but rather they are a site, a set of guiding strategies for how to address the key concerns of the community. We created the frameworks by identifying the themes that came from all of the engagement we've done so far, from conversations with you and from the current conditions and concerns and the data that we've collected on the city, and pulling those into goals and strategies, or rather pulling in the goals and strategies that are in other Bakersfield plans to ensure alignment with what you've already been doing. And from there, we consolidated these strategies and filled in any missing gaps that were needed to comply with the requirements and meet the community vision. I do want to emphasize that engagement has been an ongoing and comprehensive part of the general plan process. We've had a lot of workshops, pop-ups, surveys, and focused conversations that all led to where we are now. That was all consolidated into the ideas in the frameworks, which were also used to have more specific conversations with local community groups, community leaders, city departments, and updated to reflect those dialogues. From there, you each have provided input on the frameworks individually, as Mr. Burns mentioned, which we very much appreciate, and we are here today for any additional thoughts or comments to be included in the draft general plan itself. This is a summary of the engagement that we have conducted with the frameworks. So we had pop-up events, workshop events, focus group interviews with community groups and community members, departmental interviews, and Mr. Burns talked with each of you individually to get your input. Now on to the frameworks themselves. As I mentioned, we have your comments that you provided previously, so I'm going to just quickly go through each of the frameworks and pause on each one, and then please let me know if you have additional thoughts or input on how to ensure that the general plan elements will reflect Bakersfield and its needs. We have the land use and design framework, which includes place-making strategies, complete neighborhood strategies, growth strategies, promoting the desired land use mixes and land use compatibility standards. This one is really designed to achieve the vision and the land use map that you previously approved. Annexation and infrastructure revolves around SOI, future XOI expansions and annexation planning infrastructure for those areas and disadvantaged communities in those areas, and it is aligned with the municipal service review. Downtown includes land use and design specifically for the downtown area, historic preservation for downtown, transit-oriented development, and improving active transportation. Quality of life, it is a rather hefty one. It includes public art and city culture, including disadvantaged community needs in response to SB 1000, the environmental justice requirements. Water quality in the disadvantaged communities, air quality, healthy food and physical activity, and I'll add noise is also included in quality of life. Cultural and natural resources is, talks about open space, climate adaptation, recreation and parks, provision and services, open space and urban forestry access, Kern River management in line with the Kern River element, and citywide water quality and historic resources. Safety includes any hazards that Bakersfield faces, such as heat and drought, climate adaptation, water conservation, hazard risk mitigation specific to those hazards, and hazardous materials. Mobility is public transit, active transportation, mobility technology and innovation, and truck routes and shipping. Economic development includes promoting the desired industries, permitting and application process streamlining, utility provision for those industries and attracting them, and this one in particular is aligned with your economic development strategy and several other works done by your economic development department. And those are the frameworks. So now I'm very interested to hear if you have any additional thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Mr. Burns, Mr. Clegg, anything further before we go to the public for comment?
No, I, we're good.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, we have. Dave? Okay. Mr. Mahoney. You have waited a long time. Come on up here. You deserve to speak. I want to give you a...
I know better than to complain about impact fees at this point. Dave Demahowski, actually not representing just the Home Builders Association, but we've been in coordination with a number of different business organizations in the community and received a packet of information from Mr. Burns' office on Friday that outlined, I believe it was eight or nine significant policy areas that the general plan amendment will focus on, and we just wanted to make sure that we had some additional time to review and digest and comment on those specific proposals, because there's a lot of benefits, but there are also a lot of potential costs built into those recommendations. And so I wanted to make sure that this wasn't the last opportunity to take a look at that and look forward to working with you and your staff and your consultants. I wanted to point out that we've been reviewing your housing element draft, understand that you're getting very close to acceptance by the state of California. We see a lot of benefits to the business community and particularly the housing industry and the housing element. There are also some concerns about potential costs, but we do appreciate the focus on permit streamlining and other benefits contained in your documents. So I'll close with that.
Thanks.
And one of the thanks, staff, for sharing information with us.
And thank you so much for your efforts on behalf of our community, and thank you for being such a trooper tonight and waiting, but thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. You mentioned the Kern River element, I think I heard the term. Here it was under cultural and natural resources, and we had conversation when I met with staff, and we did have advocates who wanted a separate Kern River element, so explain exactly how that's happening.
Councilmember Smith, there is a Kern River element that is being developed by a different company, and we actually are meeting, I have an internal meeting and with Rincon on this Friday, trying to kind of bring those documents together. We will get with Water Department and see when we can get those draft elements to you guys also.
And that is, will be part of the general plan?
Correct. Our intent is to make sure that we're able to time it so that there's one environmental document. Worst case is the, what we put together with Rincon would go separate, and we would have to do an amendment to add the Kern River element into the plan, but we're hoping that we could pull these together and time them so they become one document. So it's Rincon's efforts and Montrose's efforts will go together.
Okay.
Councilmember Coleman.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. One of the things that you spoke about was community engagement, and you said widespread engagement, but I know that on some of these elements, the actual number of people that were in contact was really low. Can you give us a little bit more input onto what you're talking about, how much community engagement is really done in terms of numbers?
I don't have exact numbers with me tonight. We can get back to you on that, though, because I do believe our team is tracking that.
Okay, thank you.
I can tell you that we have done a series of pop-up events, making sure that at least one event, and in some cases, two events were held in each of the wards. We've done two community workshops, and as I mentioned, we had individual focus group meetings with community leaders as well over the frameworks.
Okay. If, Mr. Burns, if you could just provide that when you have that information, I'd like to see that, please. And, Mr. Burns, where are we at with circulation plan?
Councilmember Coleman, the circulation element is part of this process also. Are you specifically referring to the roads or, what was discussed tonight was the mobility element. The mobility element is really that circulation element.
I don't know how you define that, but I haven't seen anything for circulation plan or circulation element that, you know, combines the roads and, you know, bike lanes and bus routes and, you know, potential for future light rail, or I haven't seen any of that.
Councilmember Coleman, the circulation map itself would have arterials, your collectors, the highway systems. There is not a current rail system, as you're talking. The bicycle paths, that would be more tied to the active transportation plan. I'd be more than happy to get you what we currently have. I will say there's still discussions going on between City Shafter, City of Bakersfield, Kern County, and some landowners on the West Beltway. That's probably the most critical piece right now that's changing. Last council meeting, you had a discussion of the Roseville Ranch and what's going on through the Newmark Group, so there has to be changes to our circulation element in those areas to facilitate that size of a potential mega site property.
And my last question is regarding the timeline. Where are we at? Give us an idea what, or me, give me an idea of what we projected the timeline would be, because I thought we were going to be finalizing this stuff in June, and obviously that's not going to happen. So could you give me an idea of what the timeline proposed was and what the timeline is now to complete the general plan?
We are anticipating completion, including the environmental assessment and going to adoption early next year, spring of next year. And as far as how that aligns with the original schedule, I believe we had a couple months delay to make sure that we got enough engagement involved in some of the different phases of the project, but we did originally project a, I believe, four-year timeline, and we are at four and a half.
So we were always talking about 2026, completing this.
We had originally said 2025, and because of that delay to conduct more engagement, we're now at early 2026.
All right. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. He brought up the discussion on the active transportation plan and the circulation. Does it get folded in to your arterial collector map, then you show the bike paths on that, or do they stay separate?
The circulation element will have a single map that shows, or it'll have separate maps of each of those transportation systems, but then we'll have a consolidated map that shows the entire transportation network.
So does all get consolidated together?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quickly, one of the conversations that this council has had in prior meetings is to talk about, you know, South Bakersfield Beltway and really starting to take a look at what it would take to make sure that we have a really efficient and effective system as we see a lot more development and growth in South Bakersfield. Southwest continues to boom. It's certainly grown quickly, and we're looking at, you know, some additional growth coming to Southeast Bakersfield, and so I just wanted to see if that, what is already included in the document or is something that could potentially be looked into.
Councilmember Arias, I will need to get back with you. There is a South Beltway that's been part of the circulation element for years, but I'm not sure if that actually addresses your concerns or not, so I probably want to provide you that document to see if it addresses your concerns. If not, we can look into it.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see other requests to speak. Vice Mayor.
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. And council and mayor's statements, next. I don't see any requests, and so we stand adjourned at 8:31. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.